Ask everyone to please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and interest for all.
We are ready to approve the minutes from January 31st, regular meeting, and I'll entertain a motion to do so.
I move.
Seconded, is there discussion? None. All in favor of the motion to approve the minutes from the regular meeting on January 31st signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. And we also have minutes from the Board of Review and Equalization from January 31st. I'll entertain a motion to approve those. I say move.
Seconded.
Move and seconded to approve the Board of Review and Equalization minutes from January 31st, is there discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Okay, there are no accounts payable and no manual checks, so that brings any announcements. Are there any changes to the agenda?
Yes, I do have, Mr. Cochran wanted to be here for Dr. Ditten's presentation and unfortunately he has a hearing in Circuit Court, so we've asked Roger to go first, we've moved his 11:00 appointment, and then Dr. Ditten will go after Roger.
And I believe-
And also the county clerk does not have a person to present for approvals.
Okay, so we'll move down then to public comment. Lynn Boquero?
I'm Lynn Boquero. Yesterday I asked about the function and goals of the JCDAs. I also pointed out some statements on their website which I felt needed to be emphasized. Today I would like to raise some concerns about the JCC. What is your purpose? Who do you represent? Who do you serve? In the video tour on the JCC website, Patsy Nolan says Jefferson County is a great place to live and spoke of, quote, "enjoying the splendor of the great outdoors," end quote. This is certainly true now, but will it continue to be when we become a sad, dirty, polluted, industrial area? Who will want to live here or visit here then? I have watched a tourism video in this very room. Everyone talked about what a gem we have and our growing tourism industry. There were no factories or smokestacks in the video. No one even mentioned them. How can you pretend this will not harm tourism? Once this door is opened, heavy industry is all we will attract. Patsy Nolan says in the video tour that Jefferson County has a progressive planned future and boasts a promising future, and yet there is nothing progressive or promising about returning to heavy polluting industry. At a previous meeting, she seemed concerned that the rest of West Virginia thought of us as snobs. Are we snobs because we don't want to sacrifice the health of our children for a few factory jobs? In the video, Patsy Nolan also speaks of the advantage of our proximity to the nation's capital, and yet she does not want to support the commuter rail service. This should be viewed as an investment in our future and not merely a benefit for current commuters for whom she has not concealed her disdain. The JCC website states that Jefferson County is served by five county commissioners, each representing a different magisterial district of the county. Your duty is to represent and serve the citizens of the county. It is not to represent the interests of polluting foreign companies and their investors. It won't matter how much Rockwell spends on playground equipment or how many baseball uniforms they buy when our children have breathing difficulties or suffer with chronic illnesses. I thank those of you who have made the well-being of your constituents your highest priority. Thank you.
Diane Bluest?
Good morning, Diane Bluest. I live in, well actually I'm in Shepherdstown Magisterial District in Harper's Ferry. You'll be happy to know that I left my notes at home because I checked them and left them on my desk. This is going to be really brief. You all have been talking about what is required by statute and by law for the JCDAs membership. The one thing I haven't heard any of you mention is this, this is from the bylaws, and I also double-checked this morning, and it is in the West Virginia code. Let me get to the right point here. Other persons, firms, unincorporated associations, and corporations who reside, maintain offices, or have economic interests, as the case may be, in Jefferson County shall be eligible to participate in and to request the county commission appoint members to the authority. So looking broadly at economic interests, I can, I'm not applying, but I consider myself to have economic interests in this county. I sunk all of my money into my little farm, and this is where I'm going to live, so I certainly have economic interests. So basically, my request to you this morning is to really cast your net as broadly as possible. There are clearly some people that we need to have and should have. I think we should have, obviously, agriculture and tourism because those are two of our main industries, but don't discard people just because they don't fit into one little keyhole. Anyway, thanks.
Jay Mansfield?
This is a county where bad ideas come to die. My name's Jay Mansfield, I live in Shepherdstown, and I have close to 30 years of experience in military medicine, and I've tracked sick children worldwide for the Surgeon General of the United States Army. President Patsy Nolan, from your newspaper statements, I wonder if you think I'm part of some left-wing, tree-hugging, save-mother-earth cabal? That would be a mistake in judgment. You seem to not understand that we are income and your expense. Madam President, I've done the risk calculations, and when I sort the people involved in this, you come up as a big risk to this county because you are not opposing Rockwell, and I need you to, and I'd like you to change your mind. Rockwell told us they're shocked by our resistance, but we have newspaper photos of Canadian schoolchildren holding their noses in Milton, Ontario due to Rockwell pollution. They get this level of resistance often. Mark my words, when Rockwell decides to open a second line in their same plant, there will not be 200 trips per day but 400 truck trips per day, right across the street from an elementary school, twice the pollution, twice the trucks, twice the risk. They're running two water lines right now into their plant and two gas lines. Trust me for once, they want to be able to easily double their production because their production system is timed like a metronome. They cannot increase its rate. It's not like others. This one's different. Control room, mark this on tape, you were warned. This is environmental race system perpetrated by the JCDAs in the city of Ransson. They placed pollution right next to the minority populations of the county, the JCDAs needed supervision, and the commission failed to provide that. The EPA has regulations and recommendations. The regulations are not tied enough to be safe, so they just suggest that people with breathing difficulties not go outside and breathe on bad days. This is not safe, that's proof that they believe it's unsafe. Let me be very clear, if the EPA tells you to not go outside and breathe because of pollution, that means pollution is not safe. It also means their regulations are not protective but enabling of pollution. Ironically, pediatricians say that children with breathing difficulties need fresh air. Madam President, where should the students at North Jefferson Elementary go to get their fresh air? They cannot be expected to go outside for that, so where do they go to breathe? I'm being completely serious. Where should they go for their required fresh air? There's a reason why schools cannot be built close to factories. It's dangerous and puts the children at risk. That has already been decided. Are you awake? Building and operating factories near elementary schools must put children at the same risk. It does. Jane Tab, Josh Compton, Caleb Hudson, and Ralph Lorenzetti, each of you need to stand up in opposition to President Patsy Nolan. Anything short of that is a lack of courage and evidence of maligned intent. This board's lack of leadership and lack of spine has forced the Jefferson County School Board into an impossible position and a protective posture that they do not deserve. How can the Board of Education possibly support industry near the elementary school-
Mr. Tab, would you come forward, please?
And also support child safety and health.
David Tab, Jefferson County resident, taxpayer, investor, lifelong businessperson, been paying taxes since I was about four years old. I had the opportunity the other night to come to a forum, open forum, it was pleasant. I think county commission meetings need to be taking place as such instead of just a forum. People were not restricted, they were given time, they were not time-restrained. I think it's a good opportunity to show what people can do in those conditions instead of where we are right now. There was a talk about a $2,000, $2 million deficit on what was requested. What wasn't talked about is what all the mistakes that had been made in the past. I've made several predictions of, especially with the gaming industry, and they came true. How do you think I knew that? I'm a businessperson, I've been doing it a long time, I understand business. I may not have the education or the piece of paper that says that I know what I'm doing, but I've paid millions in taxes. I've paid more in taxes than what I own right now. The government has never helped me, but yet you let two outside entities that are not U.S. companies to come in and put the pilot program or fund them millions of dollars that they only have to pay back, if they have to pay back at all, pennies on the dollar. But yet you come to us and have continued to increase our taxes, increase the value of our properties, tell us what we have to do, increase fees, you're at the limit of what you can charge, so now you're coming back and say, oh, we're going to charge you more fees that you can't even write off. This is unacceptable. What are you going to do about it? It's been going on for a long time. In the year 2000, there was over $25 million reserve in the Jefferson County bank accounts. What happened to it? Some of you were there, and some of you spent it instead of reserving it for when there's need. There's need now, and there's no money. Shame on all of you. I've done my part, and I'll continue to do my part. Now I need you to step up or step down. It's your choice. Y'all have a nice day.
Nicola Bastian? Good morning.
I'm Nicola Bastian, and I live in Melville, and I continue this idea with the bear standing for future generations to be protected from any folly of further dirtying up our good planet Earth and our environment in Jefferson County. I'm coming today in the name of 88 grandmothers who stand for the health and the healing for future generations. Those of you who have made up their minds about heavy industry will most likely get bored listening to all of us, and those who already have a different opinion will be maybe just as bored because they already know. Why do we still come here? We come here because while at the beginning some of you have said they were ignorant of the effects, they were ignorant of the facts, it is no longer a time to say that we can be ignorant about the facts, and this is not the only company threatening. If we let this company come in, the whole Appalachian region will be another area for heavy pollution. If you go on Facebook of citizens concerned or concerned citizens, you will see a statistic video of Louisiana, which could be the richest state in the Union and is the poorest state for most people because the income from these huge companies is not being distributed. They're the lowest in education, and they are rich in income. I leave you with that thought today. Thank you.
Ruth Hatcher?
Good morning, commissioners. Good morning. I bring my little bear here today, again, to represent the children of North Jefferson Elementary. I would like to know, where do you, each of you live? Because I think the people that thought this plant would be a good idea probably don't live anywhere close to where this proposed plant is. So I would like to ask a question. All these people who support this plant, where do you live? Because I can guarantee you, if you lived across the street, that plant would never have come to Jefferson County. What did those poor people who live across from the plant ever do to deserve this kind of pollution? I'd like to know. This is a very, they pick on the lowest point of the county to pollute, this is what they do. They call it the sacrifice zone, so for the betterment of others, we're going to sacrifice, and it's very sad. We need to stop this. I'm very concerned about the JCDAs vetting process. There was an article about a cellphone owner who was then later sued, I think, for $50,000. It almost sounded, when you read it, like a Saturday night SNL skit. It was so ridiculously vetted. And also the Project Wedge, what were people thinking about Project Wedge? I'd like to know, what is the vetting process? And by the way, companies do lie to get into a community, you do know that. You need to vet them and research. Obviously, this was not done with Rockwell. Rockwell has continued to have a practice of deception, and their current, I think it was Channel 9, they said they had never had opposition to anything before, and that is a total lie for sure. And for them to say that is amazing that they would do that on TV. And number two, when they say about no harm will come to anyone, how can that amount of toxic pollution create no harm to anyone? That's ridiculous as well. So I feel they have sold you something that you were not aware of, which they have bamboozled every place they go around the world. They're very effective at doing this, and they did not tell you what was happening. So based upon that, I would think the pilot agreement should be null and void based upon that deception of this company, period. The end. You did not have all the facts. They totally bamboozled you, and they're experts at this. They know exactly what they're doing. We are geologically challenged, and just like Microsoft left a place in Mecklenburg County, Virginia because of the challenges of having cars topography. And they also did more studies. Thank you. Thank you.
That concludes the people on the list. Is there anyone else that would like to make a comment before we move on? We have a little time. All right. Okay, and that concludes the public comment portion of the meeting, and we are early for everything. Yeah, but yeah, we can do, Stephanie, do you have anything on legislative updates?
I do.
Okay.
Hold on, let me go back to, I have it here on my end.
I have, while you're looking, I have one thing that I've sort of been following as closely as I can, but it's Senate Bill 28, and what that does is that it redistributes some of the funding that is permissible from hotel motel taxes, it redistributes some of that funding. So it is, it is in the Senate right now, and I believe it's been, the last I heard, it was referred to the Rules Committee, and sometimes things go there and never survive, but I'm not sure, but that's what, basically, that bill does, it redistributes, and it redistributes it to infrastructure, convention, and something else. I didn't write it down.
I have economic development. Economic development activities.
Uh huh.
Right, okay. Including site development facilities and infrastructure, but then my notes say that it helps some counties like Tucker that struggle to meet obligations for medical and emergency services, so I'm not sure. Why is it related?
Yeah, that, it is, it's very broad. Yeah, so it would, I believe, I don't believe the Convention and Visitors Bureau would be, is affected by it. It's everything that the county commission has authority to distribute, so it just, they didn't give us any more funding-
Right.
-in the bill. We can just distribute it differently if, and that, what, where do you, is it still in rules? Do you, did you see?
Yeah, it's in, I have it in, hold on here, let me scroll up. I have that it passed both the Senate and the House, but it's now parked in Senate rules due to amendment offered in House Finance this week.
Okay, all right, so that's the one that I think we need to pay attention to just to see what impact it may have on our ability to distribute the funds to those agencies that we currently fund.
So there was a Senate bill, introduced Senate Bill 261, it's a magistrate bill, and they were basically reallocating magistrates across the state. In that bill, originally we were slated to get an additional magistrate, however, it was amended-
Of course.
-to only impact three counties. There's one county that would lose a magistrate and two counties that would gain a magistrate, we are not one of them. When that amendment was explained to the Senate Judiciary Committee, there was a flurry of people trying to amend it to get their county magistrate back, or, and so they ran out of time, they put it back on the agenda, and I think they never really, really-
Took it up.
Yeah, they never really took it up. The bill's not been placed back on the agenda since that time, so-
Senate Bill 251?
It's 261. So, I mean, I just want to watch because if we end up, if they end up adding back our magistrate, we'll be responsible for housing that additional magistrate.
My understanding is they're currently, Mr. Pope has talked to the magistrates about that space over there.
Yeah, they want, I mean, they want space right now for themselves, not including an additional magistrate, I think. They want additional space.
Yes, and I think he's talking, you know, about that. I think he meets with them next week, yeah, Monday, okay.
Senate Joint Resolution 11, which has been named by the governor, just cut taxes and win. It eliminates the industrial inventory machine and property tax, which begins phasing out in 2021 with a complete elimination by 2027. It does provide for replacement revenue from the state, it doesn't say how that, it just, it provides a joint, a line item in the budget-
Oh, boy.
...of money that would then be allocated to the counties to make up for the loss in revenue that they will see. So it requires the state to set aside so many millions of dollars each year as it's, so as it's phased out, that number goes up. And again, they don't provide any indication as to where that money will come from or how they're going to make up the revenue loss for the inventory tax.
Taxpayers.
Yeah, right.
What they're going to do is slowly phase it out, so it's very subtle to taxpayers. So by the time it's all phased out, wow, what happened?
And so, and we talked about the education bill that would allow boards of education to raise their levy rate. That was amended to require them to go back to the vote, and I think that was the only amendment, to require them to go back to the vote, they would have to have an election in order to raise the levy rate now. There was a House bill from exemption of new vehicles from property tax. As far as I know, that has not gone anywhere. House Bill 2678. There's a House Bill 2699 is a new bill dealing with annexation by minor boundary adjustment, but I don't think that it would have an impact on our annexations here.
Why do you think so?
Because our minor boundary adjustment, because we have the urban growth boundaries, we do it differently than other counties that do not, so, yeah, we're the only county, right, we're the only county that has it. So it actually gives you more, more power now. It didn't, but several, a couple of years ago, you were provided with additional powers to deny this. All right. There is a new House bill that would establish 911 procedures for next-gen 911, which I believe that we are already doing, but many of the states are not, and they're going to set up a committee, and counties will be represented on that committee, and it would be nice if we could get Jeff on that committee. I know that he's the state's 911, he's on that committee, so it would be nice if he could be appointed to that. I think he would be valuable to them. And there's, that doesn't apply to us, sorry. There is a new, it doesn't apply to us, but I'll just let you know, it allows counties to charge an amusement tax, but you have to have a population of 10,000 or under, and so we don't, but there-
How many counties have that?
I think there are some counties that are tourism counties that can't provide emergency, I mean, that's what they said it was for. It's for counties that rely heavily on tourism, so their population is not very high.
Work.
Yeah, and so they're, they're struggling to provide emergency medical services to their tourists.
I'm just curious, how many counties, 55 have less than 10,000?
I don't know.
Just to interrupt?
Oh, I'm sure there are.
Yeah.
Are we talking 50% or 20%?
Maybe, I don't know.
But you hear of counties that have no grocery store and no-
Yeah.
-fixing.
One of the split stoplights.
That'd be an interesting.
House Bill 2861, which is introduced, it's in political subdivisions, and that provides counties with the authority to impose a 1% county sales tax, and it would not apply within the municipalities who have already implemented a sales tax. So here in Jefferson County-
Most of our municipalities are-
-charging a 1% sales tax, and also charge a BNO tax in addition to that as well. So this would provide the county that same authority to impose a-
See, for bordering counties, those ideas are just terrible, because even the gas, everybody gets their gas in Virginia, everybody will just start shopping in Virginia or Maryland, and, I mean, if you're going to make a massive purchase, they're going to go to Maryland or Virginia. I mean, yeah, 1% sounds small, but it means we're buying like a $5,000 set of appliances or something, I mean, it adds up.
Well, one of the, and I think one of the problems with that, though, Josh, is that, you know, we're, none of us, no county, we're so restricted in the amount of fund, amount of revenue that we have, and we're, you know, the legislature dictates that. So when we go to the legislature and say, you know, we want, let's take sports betting for an example, you know, we want a piece of sports betting funding or revenue, and they can say, well, are you, have you maximized your opportunity for, you know, having budgetary problems? Are you, have you exercised your opportunity for the 1%, to add the 1% sales tax? So, you know, I mean, we'll just have to wait and see how all that plays out, but I think it's a double-edged sword, really.
It's just another tax on our residents, I mean, most of these states-
I understand that.
-have different mechanisms. Some states have no income tax like Florida, but their sales taxes are super high.
That's something else that they proposed in the House of Delegates. In fact, I think the House of Delegates did pass a bill that, or, I don't know where it is, but they, I believe, they passed a bill that exempts income tax. So I don't know where that is in the legislature, but it, but I saw that earlier this week, or maybe- or maybe it was last week.
They were going to exempt social security tax.
Social security tax, that's right. Tax on social security, exactly.
Which should have happened like a decade ago.
Right, exactly. Well, they never should have included it, but they did under Reagan, so.
The state needs to throw the whole tax structure out and mimic another state's that works a lot better.
Definitely need some work, so. Anyway, that was the only other thing that I had too. And I don't know that bill number.
Okay, I'll try to find it.
But it does exempt tax on social security. I don't know where it is in the process. I do, I did hear that it passed out of the House, though.
Again, that's, I mean, for a state like West Virginia with an aging population, that's a lot.
Yeah, it's a lot of money.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're going to have to find a way to recover.
Even to retirees, they don't want to move to states with high sales taxes because they're all consumption taxes. So that just pushes more retirees from moving here, so.
And I will say that the inventory tax bill has not had any movement, but the reason that that is so is because they've been focusing on the education bill, so.
Absolutely.
Well, and I haven't heard anything, I don't expect, like I say, I haven't heard anything that any of our legislators have been, brought anything to the legislature about our, I don't know what the best word, dead body issue. I know that's not going to be a popular issue to work with, but it's.
There are actually a lot of counties where, I mean, every county handles it differently, but there, I think every county is, is doing something that may not, you know, it's kind of a gray area in the code. So it actually is relevant to, yeah. I mean, if you have a funeral home that you're working with that's, that is able to take on that responsibility, it's not as big of an issue. But I've seen it on the listserv. There have been counties where it is an issue and they're asking, how do you handle this? And the answers are across the spectrum, so. But I will follow up with our legislators on our, on our legislative issues.
Well, I assumed that you had sent Nathan's memorandum to him and that in my notebook and I thought, I haven't heard anything about that. What's.
I'm going to Charleston on Sunday, so I will talk to them about that.
Okay.
And see what they're doing about it.
They're helping this or not, yeah. Next week is the last day in the House, I think Tuesday.
I saw the calendar.
And then there's, the Senate is later and I can't, I think that the, it's a week from Tuesday in the Senate.
Okay. All right. I'm sure then. Okay, well, we are, the county commissioners, you have anything else, Stephanie?
That's all I have.
Okay. Do we have any commission reports that anyone wants to?
I can, I can just type in some stuff.
Just, just one thing. The transfer station is looking to build a new, essentially headquarters or trailer. The other one is severely falling apart to the point of water coming through ceilings. So that should be getting started soon. They're going to still be open, maybe closed for a few days. I don't have the exact dates here, but they'll open, have a little kiosk area until it's finished, but that was long overdue. That's all I have to report regarding that.
Ralph, do you have anything?
Well, I'm going to ask Josh on that issue, since I use it out there occasionally.
Yeah, I do too.
I use, and you know, this is nothing critical right now, but I put a lot of yard waste back in the back. And currently, you got to drive behind the cars that are going into. And I think it would be better at some point to work out a better system there.
And that's been discussed for a long time. The problem is the cap landfill. You can't disturb the caps. So trying to figure out a new route is very difficult.
I understand, but I just, since I have come close to catching an end of another truck, I thought I should say so.
Yes, I agree, just unfortunately with the schematics, it's not going to work right now.
I don't think I've had a, you know, I changed committees, so, but I think we have, you know, there, like Region 9 has something coming up shortly.
They do.
And I think the planning weekend, I believe.
All right.
But I'll let you know as soon as those all occur.
Okay, well, we've all been tied up with border review and equalization. We're going to be, we're going to come into budget next week. We're going to, we had our budget 101 session in here this week earlier and that went really well. And Michelle, thanks to Michelle and Stephanie for all their hard work on that. And my meetings will be coming up next week. And so that's all I have to report. I've been looking over the legislation as I've had time and really didn't have chance to prepare too much except for work on the Senate bill, so. Caleb?
With the Board of Health on the agenda, they'll cover anything I say, so.
Oh, right, okay, all right. Jane?
I just met with the folks last week from the Shepherdstown Library for their budget request, so I have some background on that. And yeah, just been involved with going through the appointment process for JCDA and all our numerous Board of Review and Equalization meetings and so forth, so starting, and we'll be delving into the budget soon. But most of my meetings are scheduled for next week too, so there'll be fire and rescue and all that good stuff coming up and.
I'm meeting with Shepherdstown at four o'clock today. And one other quick thing, just legislative items, I don't know if you update, I know one of the local delegates was talking about a bag tax or something along those lines. I don't know where that went or if that's.
Talking about a what?
A bag tax, a plastic bag tax.
Oh, I don't.
Is that still in process or is that dead on arrival or?
I haven't seen anything on that, but, but I've heard the same thing, but I haven't heard it this year.
I'm just curious to see if there's any support for that or anything.
It introduced it this year.
Did he?
Yes.
All right.
Is there any support for it or do you know, is it just?
I'll look.
O A or?
I don't think it has any support, but I will look at, I'll look.
Okay, thanks.
I should add one thing. Dale Manuel had me stop in at the parking wreck and I've met with Jennifer and she just laid what they're doing now.
Yeah.
And I guess we'll get all that report when the budget starts.
We will, I'm sure.
Amphitheaters progressing nicely, so.
Yeah, it sure is.
I did want to let you know, I have one more thing, that our new financial system is up and running. And Michelle has, in addition to doing everything for budget, she has been training people or saving money. Yesterday, she trained department heads while we were meeting here. She trained department heads on the new system, how to look up their budget. It's really exciting. I went in, even though I haven't been trained, I was able to figure out how to look things up for our budget. You know, I put in our line item and I could go in and click on a payment and then you can click on the invoice and see it. You're able to export everything to Excel. So it is, it, I think it will, it will really improve the way that we do business in the regard to our budget. And I think, I spoke to the sheriff yesterday and he was also very happy with the system. So yes, there's a, of course, it's a new system, so there are a few hiccups and we're getting, you know, we're dealing with those, but I think overall, once we're used to it and up and running, and I'm going to quote the sheriff, he's not here, but he said, in six months, we'll wonder how we ever lived without it. So it is really exciting and I just also want to thank Michelle for all the hard work that she's been doing on that system, working with our, our vendor and making sure that everyone is trained and knows how to use the system, so.
All right. Does anyone have any other comments? We're a little, a little ahead of time, so we can go ahead and take a break until 10:15.
Well, our applicant is here, unless you object to number two, interview and appoint the Jefferson County farm application.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, as long as there's no one else coming. Do you know of anyone else who's coming? Okay, well, we can go ahead and do number two. You're five minutes early, but we can do that if you're ready. You can come on down.
The applicant is Catherine Johnson.
Yeah, right. Ms. Johnson, how are you?
I'm good. So just tell us a little bit about yourself, who you are and why you want to be appointed to this board.
I'm a longtime resident of Jefferson County, 25 years. My husband and I bought a small farm and we've been operating that since we came back to the county. I actually grew up in Berkeley County. I have always been involved in farming at some point in my life as a child and also my adult life. Moved away from here for a while and came back and we've been enjoying the vast land, being able to be in an area where there's open space and farming is still existing. Our neighbors are all farming, so we feel like we purchased property in a nice spot. Been involved with 4H and with the Farm Bureau from time to time and have worked with some ag, the Ag Task Force a little bit. I'm interested in the farmland preservation because I see that we are losing our farmland in, in our county as well as our area around us and then really in the entire nation. And because I love farming and I love being around the farmland and producing my own food and also selling some, I'd like to see that it continues. And one way to do that is to provide a public service, to be on this board and see what the future is.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for Ms. Johnson?
Let me just ask, are you involved with the farmers markets at all or?
My husband and I are utilizing direct marketing from our farm. We raise poultry. We've been raising turkey as our primary product and obviously, we sell that at Thanksgiving, the week before Thanksgiving in the farmers markets at that time. I have been working, been keeping up with what the farmers markets are doing and I've visited them, but we have not actually participated in one because I worked for the federal government for 32 years and my husband's a blacksmith. So his primary occupation on our farm is blacksmith and the farm became secondary with the children helping. Now that all the children have moved along and I'm retired, so I'm now the full-time farmer.
Great. Any other questions?
Well, I just let folks know that I know both Catherine and her husband Eric, they were on Farm Day, I don't remember what year, many years ago, and your kids helped with the tour and so forth. And I think somebody with a fish and wildlife biologist's training and background would be a good asset on our farmland protection board. Realizing that criteria is different, maybe, for what you worked in in the federal government, but still, we're all about saving the soil and the water, so.
Well, actually, there is a connection. My work with Fish and Wildlife Service was training and I worked at the National Conservation Training Center, so conservation is in the title of that. And my husband and I did win, we were selected as the county conservation award and I don't remember the year either. But everything that, the practices that we put on our very small farm has been towards conservation. So as far as I know, we were one of the first farmers to try grassland, grass-fed beef without adding grain. And so, and same thing for our sheep. So I have been putting in those practices, the same concepts, less antibiotics, less medications, those kind of practices, management, good husbandry, we've been doing.
As part of our farm plan. And I see you are a conservation biologist?
Mm-hmm.
That's good, great. Sounds to me like a good fit.
The right fit for the farmland protection board. Any other questions?
All right. So we only have one applicant, so we'll just, I'll make the motion that we appoint Catherine Johnson for the unexpired term for farmer-at-large ending September 7th, 2020 at the Farm Protection Board.
It's going to move in September.
Is there further discussion?
All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you and thank you for your willingness to serve. We couldn't do what we do without people like you serving on our boards.
So we'll take a break until, if there's nothing else we can do, until.
Roger.
Roger.
We'll be here. So I guess 10:45.
Saw Becky.
Yeah, Becky, you can check.
Oh, okay.
All right.
And that's what I figured.
Okay, I was going to ask if you could, okay.